All right, well, it's seven o'clock. It looks like we got everybody, so we'll get started. Called to order the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, December tenth, twenty twenty. Just reminder, the meeting is held virtually, can be viewed on local cable channel thirteen oh three. And on the internet at townhallstreams.com by selecting Bucksport. If you have questions during any discussion items or agenda items, you can email Sue Lassard. Call her on the phone. Roll call Jake.
Mark Eastman.
Here.
Jim Morrison.
Yes.
Paul Bissonette. Is Paul here?
He was.
He is.
I am here, sorry about that.
Okay.
I'm here.
Uh, Peter Stewart.
Here.
Dan Ormsby.
Here.
Kathy Downs.
Here.
Ed Rankin.
Here.
Uh, next item is presentation of Town Council recognitions. Uh, Sue, do you want to go ahead and what we talked about today?
Sure, um, so some of you, I think, have already heard this if you've watched, um, this fellow Sossar keeps trying to join.
It's taken, it's taken care of. It's Matt Keen.
It's Matt Keen?
He's on his son's laptop.
Okay, well, he needs to try again because I think he just.
Matt Keen would.
He's here. I admitted him.
What's that? You admitted him?
I did.
Okay, thank you, Rich.
Welcome, sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, so those of you who have been, uh, will follow us on Facebook, who will may have seen this if you clicked on it, but, um, annually, I write a poem up for our employees, uh, and I always give it at, uh, our annual luncheon. And there's no annual luncheon this year because there's no get together allowed. So I wrote the poem anyway, um, I, I posted on Facebook, but I'm going to read it into the council minutes as well, just because the purpose of writing the poem is to recognize all the really wonderful people who work for this community and the contributions they make. And I'm no poet. I am not a poet. Part of it is supposed to be funny. If it isn't, I apologize, um, but it's supposed to have meaning for the people who work for us and who have been doing this year, just they always do a yeoman's job, but this year is a yeoman's job on steroids, given everything that's going on, so bear with me. I'll read my poem. It's called Christmas Twenty Twenty. It was the month before Christmas, and who would have guessed that the year twenty twenty would be such a mess? Thanks to our virus, we now all wear masks, or at least we're supposed to, depends on who you ask. No concerts, no parties, no bars, no big fun. This fun sucker year is fortunately almost done. But here in Bucksport, despite all the bother, we continue good works and take care of each other. Public Works has had a very busy year indeed, with miles and miles of paving and the road edging that it needs. Not to forget the winter when they don road warrior clothes as they keep our roadways safe from all the ice and snow. The transfer station continues to be the most popular place in town. Danny and Misty help people there, and we no longer see anyone frown. Fire EMS has been challenged as the virus frontline crew, dressing up in spacesuits to respond to calls for me and you. No entry to public safety unless you work there too, and even then attempt check every time you do. Thanks to dispatch, we have a ready supply of masks for the public that they don't have to buy. Dealing with COVID is just one more thing for our police personnel to do. They routinely deal with all sorts of crap to keep people safe, me and you. McCrillis has joined us as our school SRO, but his hiring is much more than that. For the first time in forever, the department is now fully staffed for twenty-four seven coverage. For our public safety peeps, Sean, David, and Mike are the leadership crew. I count on them for so many things, and they always know what to do, and then they do it. The town office has now turned into a plexiglass-covered place on counters, windows, and on desks, dividing up our space. Despite changing COVID rules, helping people never stopped, even though we taped stuff to windows and added a box in which to drop just about everything. Jacob ran an election, the biggest one we've ever seen, with dividers, masks, and sanitizer. It was the safest place to be. Jackie seems to be shrinking, and her med stuff is getting better. No more sandals in cold weather. She's even wearing sweaters. She's now been with us more than a year. Her first commitment is now passed. Our dog-loving assessor adds fun to this place, and we hope her employment will last, and she does not go anywhere else. Luke works too many hours. Helping folks build dreams does not bring him stress. But he also has to deal with many complaints, and those are usually a mess. Rich is always busy, and he has a great work drive. You may find him most anywhere, helping Bucksport thrive. In addition to keeping sewer straight, along with taxes and other matters, Annie keeps my plants healthy because she reminds me to water. Rocky pays the bills to keep our credit good. She sometimes has to chase folks to turn in paperwork that she should. Despite the addition of many more rules, Rachel works hard every day. We appreciate her efforts to keep things straight, and especially the pay. The sewer plant is humming along thanks to Dave and his capable crew. With the addition of solar this year, the electric bill is now lower too. Despite the COVID craziness, the Marina had a good year. Thanks to the efforts of Rich, Mike, and Bill, even diesel fuel is now here. And then there is the council, our elected folks who lead the way. When I look at what other communities have, I thank God every day. This is my sixth Christmas poem here, and my writing has not improved. But my love of this place has grown leaps and bounds, which is the major reason I moved. If there has to be a pandemic that brings fear and craziness too, I would rather go through one in Bucksport with every one of you than anywhere else. I am blessed with the best staff ever. No manager could find a better crew. I am thankful for you all every day and for everything you do. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
You're welcome. Thank you for your patience.
Uh, next item is considered minutes of previous meetings. Uh, we have two Town Council minutes from eleven, twelve, twenty twenty, and council minutes from ten, twenty-two, twenty twenty. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Jake?
Mark Eastman.
Approve.
Jim Morrison. Think you're muted, Jim. How about a thumbs up? All right. Paul Bissonette.
Approve.
Peter Stewart.
Approve.
Dan Ormsby.
Approve.
Kathy Downs.
Approve.
Ed Rankin.
Approve.
Uh, next item is correspondence. We have two. We have a donation to the Bucksport Animal Shelter. Hopefully, everybody saw that generous donation to the shelter and is that, uh, Sue, just, I, is that something that's familiar to the shelter or that come out of? Was that the expectation, do you know?
That was not an expectation. That was the, the shelter took on the animals on the passing of a person, and the family was very grateful for their help.
Nice. And then, uh, mask-required business poster.
That is the one that was developed through the, the joint efforts of all the entities that you see represented on the, on that poster itself, um, which came out of our monthly, um, regional meeting of providers, um, that talk about these things. And these, these posters have been the, um, health center printed them and laminated them, and it has them available for any business or entity in Bucksport that wants one put up in their business so that, um, it's not just a, a piece of paper, and it's something more standardized for us locally. So the medical center took on the printing of those and the lamination, and we have them here at the town office for distribution for anyone that doesn't have one.
Any questions on either of those comments? Uh, next is ordinance to consider introduce. I don't believe we have any um, discussion items. Uh, first one, a cemetery committee update. Kathy?
Um, yes, we had scheduled a cemetery meeting. However, it was canceled due to the fact that we still have not heard from the folks at nine seventeen River Road. And, uh, we were going to have a letter sent by the lawyers. Um, and I don't know, have you heard anything back yet, Sue? Anything up to date?
No, that letter went out from the attorney's office this week, but I've not heard anything back as a result. We, that, um, the one of the first three letters that I sent was accepted because I received the return receipt request card back, so I know that, that they have that, but I have not had any contact from them since that, so.
So we're still waiting to be able to get in on the property to do some work, so.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
You don't plan on having any more meetings until you get an answer back from those letters? Is that it?
Correct.
Much we can do until we get, our attorney has advised us that although the law says that, um, we have a responsibility that if we go on the property without permission, it's trespass unless we have a court order that says we can. And right now, the civil cases are so backed up that going that route would be take more time, and it's really not. There's no desire on the part of the town to make this, uh, a conflict. This was something that was known by the parties prior to the sale, and I, and I'm hoping that we can work through this without the need to do more than have the attorney send a letter, because um, as I said, this was this whole thing wasn't unknown at the time of the sale, so.
Okay.
Kathy, does the, uh, once the snow on the ground, is that the whole sonar thing? Does that, is that going to wait till spring pretty much?
I'm not sure that they will have to do that. Do you know that answer, Sue?
I believe that because we need to have some clearing done before the before they can do the ground penetrating radar, there has to be some clearing done to allow access, that if there's snow on the ground, that will make that
difficult.
Anything else? Uh, next is the town office hours annual review or first review, I guess. Sue?
I had, um, Mayor Stewart reminded me that we were going to look at this in a year. Um, I went back from November fourth, when we started this in two thousand nineteen and came forward by month. We track the number of customers that we have prior to A M and after four thirty in the afternoon on a daily basis. We just, with Chuck Marks, we have kept those ever since we started. My info is missing because we didn't have anybody coming in. We were here, but we didn't have people coming in. Um, for the days that we were on COVID, but if you look at it, the numbers are increasing, but over the course of time, since we've started this. Um, over twenty had two hundred and nineteen people. Um, it, one thirty-six, one fifty, one fifty-two, so the numbers are going up. More people utilizing that earlier and later hours, but, um, that's the information. I, I think it's, I think that it's been successful. Uh, I think that that the last piece of it will be served by the work being done through the assessor's office, which will have everything online that is possible for all property information for assessing and all the code stuff that we have, which is, um, a big part of the calls that we receive.
All right, any questions or?
I have one.
Yeah.
Have there been any, uh, or recorded amounts of complaints about people not having access on Friday?
I have seen one, I had, there's one on the agenda when I posted this on Facebook, because that's one of the places I posted. Somebody posted, it would be nice to have some hours on Friday. That's, that's the one I've had. I, I have not, I have no, no one has emailed and said, I can't get to you. I don't, you're not, you know, I don't have any um, complaints that this office has received in regard to our hours. I have had people running in the door at five twenty-five saying, thank God you're here, you know, that that, you know, the, the ones who utilize it are doing so, but I haven't. When we first switched, um, I would come in on Fridays and because the phone, it logs calls and listen to all the calls to see, you know, what we were getting and what was happening. Um, but the incidence of any call on Fridays happening now is very low. Maybe a couple, and they're usually out of state firms that are looking for tax information that are, because they're not local. They don't know what our hours are, so. The, the number of people calling on a Friday has reduced, and I don't have any other than the, as I said, I monitor Facebook for what we get for information, and that's, all, all I saw was that one, but I don't have any others than that.
So other than, other than formal complaints, the, uh, workers, the employees, uh, there aren't seeing any complaints verbally by people or?
It shows that Jim is speaking. I can't hear him. Can anybody?
Yeah, he was, he wants to know if, if we've had any complaints. Can you hear me, Sue?
I can't hear any of you now.
I could go to the stairs and holler upstairs to you.
Right.
I can't hear anyone.
Well, we can hear you.
Jim or Dylan, if you're, if anybody can hear me, I don't know why nobody can.
I can hear you. Uh, Jacob. Jacob, would you have that answer open?
Hello?
I do, Jim. Um, when we started this, I mean, there's, I, I think change is hard for everybody.
I can't hear anyone.
And, um.
I, my sound is gone.
I didn't bring my mask on accident. And, um, we really anticipated there being a lot of questions and perhaps a lot of, not necessarily complaints, but just a lot of time for people to get used to it. And I'm the one that fields all the phone calls, you know, here at the office. I'm first in form. And I, I honestly have had very, very few people. I really can't think of anybody who has filed.
Reload it. Jump back in.
Go over and come back. I'll be back.
That has filed a formal complaint. You know, it's more a matter of, you know, hey, I, I stopped by on Friday and I, I just, it just completely slipped my mind that you guys had changed your hours, not so much a complaint, just a matter of something to get used to for people. Um, in fact.
Someone speak.
Can you hear us?
I can't. Can someone talk?
I'm talking.
I can't hear.
It, it, really, it's been the other way, Jim. People, the, especially those who utilize these new hours. You know, there are oftentimes people waiting outside in their car when I get here in the morning, waiting to get in at seven thirty before they go to work. Um, they're really appreciative of that.
I, I do hear people informally telling me that they, they would like to be able to access it on Fridays at times. And my answer to them usually is, please go and tell them in the town office so they'll know this.
Yeah.
Apparently, they're not. Thank you, Jake.
Anybody else have anything?
Okay, there I am.
Can you hear us now, Sue?
I can.
All right, we're all done, we're all done with you anyway, so.
You should just mute me. That would be good.
I'll try.
Sorry.
All right, that's all right. Does anybody else have any questions? Um, where I think this works is Sue runs the office. I don't know, other than if there's, somebody has any heartburn, um, we'll let her continue running the office the way she's been running it, and we can, if we hear complaints or it looks like it's going to be an issue, we can readdress it, but I think as far as we're all concerned, it's working right and uh, next item is the railroad property abutting the waterfront walkway.
Yes, I have, um, a, a local contractor reached out to me for assistance in, um, because they were going to do work on a main street property that has very little yard around the back of it in order to do foundation work, and they wanted permission to stage on property behind it, and they thought the town owned it, which we don't, the railroad does. And so they were having trouble getting the railroad to respond. So I reached out to the people that we had been dealing with about the cars being on the tracks. And they put me in touch with the person in charge of real estate for Pan Am who called me like that same day, which was shocking because that doesn't usually happen. And, and we talked about the issue with the business, and while I had him on the phone, I asked what the likelihood of us acquiring the, from the gazebo to the end of the House of Pizza where that road is, where all that broken track is and all that along the waterfront walkway, because it's not, it, the railroad owns it, but there's no, there's, it's never going to have a train on it again. And he was very amenable to the idea of that, um, he needed to contact someone about whether it had to be a, a federal discontinuance because it, it's part of the rail line, so to speak. But asked me to send him all the information, map and lot and all that, and he was going to get back to me, but before I went all the way down the road with this, I thought I should check in with the council as to whether this is, it's mentioned in a number of our planning documents to do some, to acquire that land and to clean it up because it's just a mess next to the walkway, and if the council doesn't have any objections, I would like your blessing to continue the discussions with this, with the railroad about how we might acquire that property. Um, it, it's my experience has been it's very hard to get them to respond in any way. I know that they're in the process of a sale of some of their properties, but this gentleman was great, and he's been very responsive, and while we have someone that is willing to work with us, it seems like a good time to perhaps pursue the acquisition of that before we Does anyone have any?
No objections here. None, no objection. Everybody, is, is everybody okay with Sue just going to at least continue the conversation? Okay? Thanks, Sue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, the last item for discussion items was an added item that Sue had, um, put on as an addendum to the agenda for, uh, talking about cruise lines, Sue?
Yes, um, the our harbor master Marina manager, um, Mike and our economic development director Rich had reached out to me, um, last week about uh, that the, that American Cruise Lines had been in touch about booking dates for next year, and I asked them to bring that through the council. Now, as a matter of history, prior to twenty twenty, when American Cruise Lines was going to dock in Bucksport, they contacted Mike Ormsby and Mike Okater, depending on what else was going to be on the dock, our harbor master took care of that. And then in twenty twenty, when COVID was present, that changed, and it only changed because um, the state had put conditions on American Cruise Line's request it to, um, have a different sort of permission structure from a community. And so since twenty-one isn't the season we're talking about is in the middle of twenty-one. Um, I brought this back to the council. So you understand what the request was, which is that in this coming year, the proposal is for Bucksport not to be an afterthought, but instead to be a destination for a number of visits during the season, which is something we've not been in the past. We've been the place to go when the weather's bad or somebody else was mad. As in two thousand eighteen, when we had eleven consecutive weeks of cruise ships docked at the dock because they couldn't go into Bar Harbor. But, um, the request is, and, and we have two representatives on the call from American Cruise Lines who can probably articulate this better, but the request is so that they can develop a schedule, understanding that if COVID is still present, and there are federal and state restrictions on this kind of activity, that it, that permission would be contingent on the fact that those, those circumstances don't exist, that we're not in still where we are today, shall we say, in terms of, of COVID. Um, Mike is on the call, Rich is on the call, um, Eric Salt is on the call, and another person from American Cruise Lines, but that's the basis for this. This subject, were it not for COVID, would not even be on your agenda because you don't regulate what boat can come to the dock. That's never been something the council has done, and, um, I mean, I, I just wanted to also take one minute to explain to anyone listening that the project that's been discussed for the dock, although it's been portrayed in the media as we're building a dock for, for cruise lines, that if anyone's read our planning documents, they know that that's not accurate. They know that the expansion of the town dock is consistent with the town's understanding that its waterfront is a big part of its future and expanding the season in which transient motors and others can enjoy the waterfront. But the cruise ships are one small piece of that, and we are protected, shall we say, from the mega ones because we have a bridge that doesn't allow passage under it. So, um, there's been some misunderstanding out there about what our proposed town dock project was and, and what it wasn't, and I just wanted to minute to kind of clarify what that is. The, the town isn't building a dock. The town is building, wants to build a dock to expand the seasonality of our, our waterfront in general overall, and, um, to attract more of the boat traffic on the Penobscot River and in this watershed to our community for all sorts of things. So that's my small spokestop block. I'll get off now, and if anyone else, uh, Rich or Mike or, um, anyone from the, that, that's what this is about, is, is the ability for Mike to schedule dates with them for this twenty-one season as long as COVID is not in this situation and is not.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah. Are there any other entities that are expressing a desire to come to Bucksport other than this cruise line? Or do we, are these random people that come here and, and want to use our dock at this point?
During the summer, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, during the summer, um, we take reservations all summer long, and they come in as people, uh, uh, you know, make decisions on where they're going to go on their trips. Um, we're becoming more and more of a destination, and especially with diesel now, that's going to make a big difference because most of our transient are diesel boats and, and they, most of them are looking for fuel. We've been guiding them down to Belfast when they leave here, uh, but we won't do that anymore. So, uh, yeah, we, we also, over the wintertime, there's an opportunity to make, uh, plans with yacht clubs where they bring a number of boats from their yacht club up at the same time, so they all travel together. It's safer. They enjoy it. They have fun and, uh, and visit the town for a day or two or whatever. And, uh, we've done that in the past, um, even on the dock when it was smaller there, I had, uh, Beverly Yacht Club from Massachusetts and they had 15 yachts there on one weekend. And they all went out to play golf and everything else. So, yeah, that's how we do it. So, um, there might be some more scheduling over the winter, uh, but would be more like with yacht clubs.
I see, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else at the call?
Mr. Mayor, um, in the unlikely event that we found ourselves in May, without restrictions, um, et cetera, and we wanted to revisit this issue. There's nothing that's keeping us from doing that, no matter what direction we give tonight.
That is correct. That's the way I understand it. And, and I think a lot of our stuff and Sue can back me up on that. It's gonna be driven by the state. We're gonna, a lot of our decisions are gonna be state-driven, whether we wanna do something or not, we're gonna be told one way or the other. Unless of course, you know, everything's all set and cleared up. But I think this is, I think this is just an initial conversation that are we okay with, you know, if everything is good to go, are we okay with allowing these folks to come in? And a lot, at least allowing Mike and his crew to, to, to have the conversations to start out. With the understanding that, just like it was last fall when we were talking about it, um, it ended, it ended pretty quick, you know, when the, so, is, is that, is that layman's terms Sue pretty easy? Is that pretty much explain it, what we're looking at?
Yes, but the, the truth is that American Cruise Lines can address this, but if we're going to be a destination, the cruise ships don't market things for June and April. The, you know, the marketing of that starts now. And so if it's, uh, and I'm sure that their itineraries are the same thing, which is that this is what's available, uh, unless. But, but as a business, they have to be able to, um, set up a, a destination, a, a trip route for their boats. And if we're gonna be a part of that, then, then this initial conversation is, yes, it's, it, it's okay for us to, to be that. If in May or whatever, we're still at whatever percent with whatever percent in the state saying you can't have more than X amount of people, then it's a different conversation. That is, because that, this is a planning tool for them based on, um, number one, their long-term relationship with the town, but also, um, just for business purposes that, but the, as, as the agenda says, the caveat is COVID, you know, depending on where that stands. Because if it is, Maine has no restrictions on that activity, then, um, but, but if they do, that's a different conversation.
Yep. Mike, I would ask maybe if, um, over the course of the next four or five months while we're working on this, if we could just get an update like once a month, maybe at a council meeting, first council meeting of the month or something.
Yeah, sure. Um, it, what it is is so they can make their schedule, basically, um, with a tentative COVID disclaimer. That's basically what it is. So, um, they can go ahead and make plans.
And just, just real quick, um, I know last fall when we were talking about this or late summer, whenever it was, we had a conversation and we were provided information around, for example, the demographics of the group of people on the, on the boat and the, and the measures that were gonna be taken before people boarded, et cetera, et cetera. Safe to assume, um, that there aren't any major changes to either the demographics of the people on the boat itself or the procedure in terms of when they board?
I'll let Eric, uh, from American Cruise Lines answer that.
I think Paul was trying to answer that.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. This is Paul with American Cruise Lines. We, uh, we thank you for taking the time to consider our return to Bucksport next, next summer. And, um, so this is, this is really for planning purposes. Right now, we're moving into a season for American Cruise Lines where we're selling cruises for the summer of 2021 and the summer of 2022. So what we would like to do is to be able to say that the American Constitution is visiting Bucksport on every one of our cruises and it's part of our brand new cruise package. So that would be very helpful for planning purposes. To answer Paul's question, the demographic of the guest is, is the same as it was when we last spoke about our COVID operating protocols. We, um, our COVID protocols are simpler. We have refined them as we've learned more about COVID and as we've brought on a bit more information and just as the entire country has learned more. So they have changed some. If, if anything, they're becoming, um, more restricted. Apparently the testing regimen that we have is, is more, it's a more comprehensive testing regimen. So if anything, if COVID is still a factor when we first are able to return to Maine, we're gonna be able to operate safely. The one thing I do just wanna let everyone know, um, we, we're not gonna enter service if it's not safe or any state government or federal government or even any community, if, if they're not comfortable with it. But we feel for planning purposes, by the time we get into summer, um, there's gonna be some sort of cruising in the United States and we wanna be part of that. And the coast domain is such an important part of what we offer. And we wanna make Bucksport one of our, um, featured ports. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Anybody have anything else?
Nope, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd just say that given what, you know, what we talked about last time, the demographics of this, et cetera, I can understand why people, um, could look at this at first glance and, and, and maybe be concerned. Um, I think the argument exists however, that in the summer, in the summer of 2021, if, if COVID is still an issue of all the people coming through Bucksport, the people coming off that boat may be the safest group of people coming into Bucksport. Um, I think you're at far more risk at Hanford, quite frankly, than you will be from any of the people coming on and off that boat. Um, we'll, uh, that's just my opinion. We'll review that then. Um, if anything needs to be changed, I would assume, but that's answered all my questions.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, is the city director here in the meeting, Sean?
He is.
Sean, what's your, what's your take on, do you feel comfortable as far as, you know, I think things will be better by then, but what's your take on this? Pete, are you out there?
He can't speak. He said he's okay with it. I'm reading a text. I'm on the meeting but not seen on the screen. With the changes as we know, uh, he would, whatever changes were made to the protocol, he would like to see those, but I can't speak, but I'm okay with it, is what he said.
I agree with Paul too. Paul said it nicely, that, um, I'm very comfortable with them coming in and, and I'm, I'm excited about it. I think it's good for Bucksport.
So if nobody has any issues, I think we'll allow Mike and Rich and those guys to at least have the conversations and then go ahead and have set up some dates with American Cruise Lines and we will continue to monitor it. Is that good for everybody?
Good.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Um, item eight is agenda items. The first is to approve resolve 2021 32 to approve the replacement for the town office fire alarm system. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion approved.
Have a motion in a second? Anything from Sue or?
Rich has done all the legwork on this, um, for me in a big way. He has had the assistance of our fire folks, um, in making sure that all of these, um, bids were apples to apples, which is why after the first ones were received, they went back to them because they were not apples to apples and now are. And Rich can probably, like, he included the memo on what his recommendation was and, um, for the purchase and why. If you have any more specific questions on that, I'm sure he can answer them.
Anybody have any questions? You have anything else to add, Rich? Like you said, that, that even though this was a higher bid on the face, they were, they were gonna provide everything that some other, the other companies were. Is that right?
That's correct. And they already service our pendants that we use at the town office. Uh, they also work in conjunction with the RSU already and are planning to expand their services with the RSU. Um, they were proactive. When we needed something, they were always the first one to get back to us. Um, we had some people below us bid, actually it took a month to get a bid to me. So I think they're the most responsive and that's the best way to go for the town.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Um, anything else from the council?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sorry.
I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask Rich, uh, is, is the alarm system presently in place? Is, is that safe at this point?
It is outdated. If we lose our power supply again, they will have to put pieces together to make it work and it will not be in compliance. And if anything were to happen, they would not be held liable. They no longer make those parts, those parts. Anyone, all five folks that visited here couldn't believe that we still had it. It, the whole system has to be gutted and it need, all needs to be new. It's basically when they come up here to work on it, Jim, they are coming from New, they're currently coming from New Hampshire. And they got a point where it's cost so much money for them to come up here, they show Luke and I how to fix it until there's a point where we can't fix that. And they were just up here two months ago, two months prior to that and two months prior to that.
And there's, at this point is that it's, it's safe but needs to be replaced?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? Jake?
Mark Eastman?
Approve.
Jim Morrison?
Approve.
Paul Bissinett?
Approve.
Peter Stewart?
Approve.
Dan Ormsby?
Approve.
Kathy Downs?
Approve.
Ed Rankin?
Approve. Next item is to approve resolve 2021 34 to approve participation in the Maine Municipal Association Workers Compensation Safety Incentive Program. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion approved.
Second, second.
We have a motion in a second? Any comments, questions, Sue?
This program, um, there was a, a program called the Leaders Program through the Maine Municipal Association and we participated in that program. And, and participating and adhering to their policies, um, reduced our workers' comp premium. They've replaced that with a safety incentive program that requires a resolve from the council and there are three tiers of membership depending on how compliant you are with everything. But, um, we can, we can save if we participate through this between seven and fifteen thousand dollars a year on our workers' comp premium. So that's why we're requesting, um, the, the prior program that we, the Leaders Program did not require a council authorization for that to move forward, but the Safety Incentive Program does.
Anything further?
Really lagging. I apologize if this takes me a little bit. You know, Mark Eastman?
Approve.
Jim Morrison?
Approve.
Paul Bissinett?
Approve.
Peter Stewart?
Approve.
Dan Ormsby?
Approve.
Kathy Downs?
Approve.
Ed Rankin?
Approve.
Next item is to approve resolve 2021 35 to approve acceptance of donation of new concession stand for Reggie Ginfield. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Sue, Rich, anybody?
Uh, yes, um, I was approached by, uh, Matt Keen. He is on the call with us this evening. Um, for the Reggie Ginfield, um, in the past couple of years, uh, Little League softball has done a fantastic job. We received a twenty thousand dollar grant, one of four in the entire world who participates in Little League America, uh, to add fencing to the field. And they've gone out and done the legwork again. And at this point, I believe you've seen the pictures that I showed you about the current condition of the existing concession stand. They are not requesting any funds from the town, um, but if you have any further questions for Matt, the plan is to demolish what's there. Um, add some, um, concrete and put the new concession stand right on top.
Any questions? Is that a project that's gonna be done this spring, Rich, or this summer?
Yes.
Matt's online, he can answer that for you for the timeframe.
Yeah, our, our plan is soon as the, uh, posting of roads come off, to be looking to, to demo and uh, peel out the old cement and lay down the new pad and go from there. The, I, I don't know if everybody saw the pictures or not, we're looking at a, a ten by sixteen with a seven-foot overhang. And, uh, in the seven, even out through the seven overhang, it'll all be a concrete broom finish pad out of that to cover for the people cooking on the drills and whatnot. Um, I planned on, if it's a go-ahead, to sleeve the slab, so if there was ever any further development in the water or sewer, sewer there, that we'll have the sleeves in place and hopefully maybe somewhere down the line, that could be something that could go in. I appreciate you guys' time and everything and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, take up.
Mark Eastman?
Approve.
Jim Morrison?
Approve.
Paul Bissinett?
Approve.
Peter Stewart?
Approve.
Dan Ormsby?
Approve.
Kathy Downs?
Approve.
Ed Rankin?
Approve. Item nine is resignations. We have health officer resignation, Val Suya, and discussion of replacement. Sue?
Um, Val has, her resignation letter is in effective at the end of, um, the month. Um, and what I'd like the council to consider is allowing me to appoint, um, Luke, our code officer as the health officer as well. Um, he's, if there's ever a question on the condition of property or the, Luke is involved in it and could easily become certified, um, it's a simple process to be certified as a health officer through the state. It's online training. Um, but I think that his, his knowledge of building construction, et cetera, for the majority of what we receive complaints about are relate to that, um, component. And so my question is whether there's, uh, an objection to com, to adding that to his list of duties.
I'm sure you've blocked Sue, but is, is Luke okay with it?
Yeah. No, I'm just gonna tell him. Yes, no, I, I, I talked to him about, um, the idea of adding that and he was amenable to that because, as I said, he's sort of our first line of that anyway, um, in terms of where complaints come or um, anything that is a bad health situation because it generally was, it, it's related to poor housing. That, that's the majority of what we get in, in terms of that. Um, so that is, um, I, I think that, I'm sure they would do a good job and yes, I did talk to him a bit before I just came to the council.
Anybody else have anything?
I, I would like to publicly thank Val Suya for her service, um, and wish her the best. She did a great job.
Yeah, she, she is the face of the golden shovel in Bucksport for uh, the sidewalk inspection and all that through Bucksport Bay as well, um, a very community mind. through Bucksport Bay as well. Um a very community-minded and for the hospice center every year. When we do our budget, if you remember, Val is always the spokesman. She's been involved with that. A very community-minded citizen. Um but um as she stated in her letter, her her just personal things that she needs to deal with. And this is, I think this has been a very tough year for her to be health officer um considering some family members have some health issues as well. So.
Great, thanks. Um next item is approval of quick claims. Just as in D's, I don't believe we have any. Uh item eleven's a town manager report.
Um I I emailed you a report this afternoon, but it atta- and attached to it is an email from Kevin Tate of Whole Oceans with an update of the project. Um there's also a press release that's gonna be going out in the next few days in regard to their acquisition of lot three at the former mill site. Kevin's email and discussing said that they've enjoyed being part of Bucksport's Main Street and have had several important planning meetings in their new office. Um with COVID-related restrictions, though, we have limited the number of staff who are in the office at any given time. They're pleased to announce to the back town of Bucksport that they will be leasing the area of lot three and soon be meeting with the code officer and Maine DEP to discuss ruling this portion portion of the property into their approvals. And with the addition of lot three, they will continue to work with Maine Maritime Academy and Bucksport Generation on the stewardship of the entire property with the goal of creating a professional-looking campus environment. They said that lot three presents tremendous opportunity for the project and with it comes the need to revisit their design plans. For that reason, the team has been and will be revising its design plans to best take advantage of the opportunities that lot three brings. As a lot three design plans come together and gain regulatory approval, they will be negotiating construction contracts and revising construction timelines. While it is early in the process to hire aquaculture staff, we are currently working with several educational institutions in Maine regarding the skills needed to work in Ma's aquaculture. And they're beginning to look at early hires related to engineering and maintenance positions so that these staff members can be part of the final design and construction processes. So that's the update from Whole Oceans. I want to thank Chris Grindel and Rich Rotella, as well as our public safety people who provided traffic control for the small but very enthusiastic stationary parade of lights held on Monday. While there were not as many floats as in prior years when a traditional parade was held, I can tell you as one who was standing on Main Street next to the town office gnome float that there was a steady forty-five minutes of cars going by with honking horns wishing Merry Christmas and lots of smiling faces. Um as I'm sure most of you have seen in the in the news, Perk had imported plastic-based waste from Ireland as a test to provide additional fuel to the perk plant. And truckloads of baled waste were transported through Bucksport. There was no notification to the town of this experiment and it appears that there was some kind of spill that occurred in Searsport resulting in a considerable amount of plastic waste on the shore and in the water. I have reached out to DEP on this matter and I have a call scheduled with them tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock to discuss this and what this experiment was, what the next steps planned are and what sort of safeguards are in place. Um of concern were the significant number of truck trips that were mentioned related to this. And now the fallout, literally, of plastic into the bay from it is a second one. But I will have more information for you after I I have a a call for the head of the Solid Waste Division and the commissioner tomorrow afternoon at three to talk about it. And finally, we welcome Stockton Springs as the newest user of the Bucksport Animal Shelter. They have signed up as of December first. The dish this edition continues to offset the loss of the town of Hampden as a member a few years ago. The per capita assessment that communities pay helps to offset the cost of our shelter operations and we serve as the shelter per number of communities. That's it.
Thanks. Under that, there was also Department Head Reports and Town Council work for two thousand twenty. Um I just want to note about the the good stuff that that we got accomplished with, you know, I don't know if we even person it seemed like all year, but we still uh seem to manage to get some stuff done and keep the town going forward. So I want to thank you all and obviously thank all the folks in the town government and uh town employees for doing those things.
All right, one more thing. Um Brooke gave me an update as I forgot to include in my report on Bucks Bucks. Um they're selling them on Tuesdays and Fridays and have had six sale days so far. They sold five hundred and fifteen bucks worth ten dollars each for a total of ten thousand three hundred dollars that either has been or will be put back into the local economy. There are nineteen businesses participating so far and it's never too late for a business to sign up. In addition to the ten thousand that town has donated, they have raised just over seven thousand so far, um making the matching fund just over seventeen thousand and donations continue to come in and we appreciate them all. So that was um the other thing. And to follow up, Mayor Stewart, um the the report that talked about the council's work in um two thousand twenty in this difficult environment, you're all to be commended for being such good leaders and and willing to keep moving Bucksport forward even though much of the rest of the world, it seems to come to a grinding halt. But um I I think that we should all be proud of what we've accomplished this year and look forward to more next.
Thanks, Sue. Um item twelve is public hearings or hold public hearings or approval of any license or permits. I don't believe we have any. Item thirteen is items on the agenda for the council or the public. I'll ask Sue if she's had any phone calls or emails while she's checking. Do we have anybody on the council that's anything to talk about? It's on the agenda.
Yeah, just a quick statement, Peter.
Yep.
Uh I just wanted to thank Sue, the whole town office and the whole, you know, all organizations in the town. They've all done great this year. And uh everyone can see it. It's you guys have been like a well-oiled machine in a not-so-good time, but and just wanted to wish everybody else Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. We won't see you again. Stay safe and have fun.
Thanks, Ed. Rich?
Yes, uh thank you. Um I also wanted to send a uh thank you to the town council for all you guys have done for the town this year. Uh also a special thank you to Whole Oceans. While we've been going on with this meeting, I've been with the oppressed person, Angie Hilton. Um and they waited to send the press release out until it was announced by our town manager. Again, they're still keeping the town first and they don't send out any press releases until the sat the town hears first. So I really like to commend them for that collaboration. That's not anything we asked of them. It's something that they do on their own and that's why they are so great to work with. Um also want to update you. Um we will be losing three businesses on Main Street due to the pandemic. Um I believe I informed you last month of Porta Call going to be closing. Uh we've also lost Blossoms by the Bay and Bucksport Bay Tanning and Jane Barber Shop will also be closing. Uh I do have some news that there will be a business moving into uh Blossoms by the Bay for two thousand twenty-one. Uh there is someone looking at Jane Barber Shop uh to move in there also January two thousand twenty-one. And we have uh Mark and I have had some positive movement on twenty-seven Main Street. Um we've had some conversations um and it looks like uh two thousand twenty-one's looking to be uh get us off on the right foot.
Thanks, Rich. Anybody else from the council have anything to say or talk about?
I just wanted to say the decorations downtown was fantastic. So I I know that you put that um Chris Grindel goes up. So beautiful. Love that.
All right. Um item fourteen is upcoming public hearings or committee assignments. Ed, do you have anything with the baseball field committee coming up or?
Uh not at the moment, no.
Okay. And we're waiting on a cemetery committee, right, Kathy? So and just FYI, um we we it's the only meeting we're gonna have this month. So um like Ed, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays coming forward. Two thousand twenty-one will be a better year, okay? We'll have a good time out there and um just be prepared when we when we do come back in January. It's not gonna be very far. We're looking at budgets um and and getting that ready to go. So the work will continue. Um we've got a good staff, good crew around here. So I am confident that that uh two thousand twenty-one is gonna be a good year for Bucksport, so.
The first meeting in January will be the meeting at which um people are sworn in. What what we should probably or could happen is if you'll need to be sworn in in person to sign things is to stop by and do that with Jacob and then we can do it again at the council meeting just so that we can keep that moving. And the other thing is committee assignments change. The worries, so think about what kind of what committees you want to be on and um have that ready for our first meeting where you're electing the mayor, the deputy mayor and count and committees stuff also. So that'll be our first meeting in January.
All right. Nothing else. Item fifteen's adjournment. Hands forward.
Have a good holiday.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
All right. Have a good night, everybody. Have Merry Christmas. See you later.
Sue?
Yeah?
I I did make a motion. I didn't hear a second.